Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, welcome back to another motherfucking special sessions. I think this is number four goddamn, is this number four? Number four, and you will never believe who we got in this motherfucker today, ladies and gentlemen. She a rapper, she a host, she she sell plates, she do hair, she do all this shit at the same house goddamn. Ladies and gentlemen, we got Nettie B up in this motherfucker.
What's happening, what's happening, what's happening?
Nettie B, what's up, what's up? For a special session, welcome to the show Nettie B.
Thank you for joining us.
I ain't a man.
Let's go.
Yeah, hey, first off, before we even start this motherfucking, tell the people where they can find you at. All your 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 socials.
You can follow me on Instagram at underscore N E T T Y B underscore two five six, that's the Instagram. And that IG going up, so go ahead and make it go up some more. You can follow me on YouTube, subscribe to my channel, N E T T Y B, anything, any T T Y B, that's me typing in on my mama, you gonna go off, let's go.
Okay then, don't go off in this bitch, before we get before we get started, tell me about Goddamn James the Dog.
Man, freedom, first of all, freedom motherfucking done, the fast way, the long way, that boy coming home, don't hold your nuts on him, cuz he coming home. Man, he doing good right now, man, he ain't, I always tell people like for him to be in the situation he in, for his his, for him still have like good, a good spirit about himself, like that 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 shows a lot to me as for him as like a person period and a man like to be in that type of situation. And still like can smile and laugh and joke and don't really like get too down about your situation cuz at the end of the day, he know he coming home and he coming home.
Yeah, cuz I be in that bitch sad as hell goddamn.
Man, it it, I mean, it it, it'll make you sad cuz every day you wake up, you still in the same spot. So that shit gonna make you sad every time that you see your people on the outside, or you him on the outside, they they turn, you know this is what you used to do before you went in, so you like, damn. But I be trying to tell them like, man, you ain't missing nothing, bruh, that shit gonna be here.
This shit gonna be here when you get out goddamn, freedom dog goddamn, just wanted to say this shit before we got started.
Appreciate it, appreciate it.
I remember I seen that nigga on the news goddamn.
On the news? What it was doing?
I don't remember, they asked him some question goddamn, but he was like, yeah, yeah, no, yeah.
Oh, I think that's when he was uh, doing the pizzas and stuff for the kids.
Maybe.
They had the news crew out there, that was in Norfolk, I think.
It was so long ago, I don't remember goddamn.
I forgot about that. Freedom done, man, the fast way, I miss that boy.
So what you got going on Nettie B, goddamn, how's life?
Life is great.
Let's let's start, let's start if we can.
What we gonna start it?
At just the beginning of Nettie B.
Okay.
You are from where?
I originated out of Mobile, Alabama.
Mobile, Alabama?
PA, real PA baby.
What's PA, what that mean?
Pritchett.
Okay then, I heard of Pritchett, Alabama.
He's not Port Arthur, don't.
No, I know, I didn't know where it was.
I'm a real Pritchett baby, I was raised on First Avenue, and I was raised in Roger Williams. No, let me, I see.
It sound like the name of a project.
The Roger Williams is the project.
I I I don't know how, I'm good at recognizing the project names.
Let me correct myself, I was born and raised on Sanders Road in Snug Harbor, that's in Pritchett. If if the people, if they on my line, they know what I mean, Snug Harbor.
Yeah.
That's that's like a whole nother.
Only if you know, you know.
Only if you know, you know, only if you know, you know.
I rode through Mobile a couple times, and I would say, when I got off the interstate, I made sure I knew where my pistol was at goddamn.
You got to.
I'm cuz you could tell.
You got to, you got to, a girl told me one one time, she said she had went down there, she had, and I know she was in Pritchett, the way she described it. She was like, she was lost, and a man said, uh, baby, let me uh, help you up out of here, it was a little crackhead on the on the road. He was like, baby, let me help you up out of here cuz your ass gonna get killed or raw, you was in the wrong spot, acting like asking for help, telling you lost, hell nah, let me get you on up out of here.
Unloose something goddamn.
We we ain't as bad as they try to make us seem, man.
So, go ahead, so uh.
Let me skip what you got.
Okay then, swap them out then.
When you were growing up, how 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 many years was this before you ended up leaving Mobile?
So, when I was in Mobile, I tell people like I only went to, what, maybe three schools when I stayed in Mobile. I stay, I moved back, I moved up here in ninety nine.
You went to three schools cuz you was getting kicked out cuz you was whipping niggas ass?
No, 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 see, listen, that's why I'm telling people I'm from. I left Mobile when I was a kid, my momma like, she had a lot of shit going on, so we had to leave and come back up here. This was like our new start for real, coming up here to Huntsville. My daddy was up here first, and that's how me and my brother ended up in Huntsville. But uh, I was born, like I said, I was born in Mobile, I slightly grew up in Mobile, but not for real, like, I only know my people, like my kinfolks and shit like that.
You know for real.
Like, I only know them cuz I ain't go outside like that.
Who know you motherfuckers?
I ain't, none of that going on, I knew that at an early age, nah, we ain't even from the place like this. But yep, I moved up here in ninety nine, and I've been up here ever since, I actually moved back to Mobile when I had my first son. That was two thousand and nine, I moved back, and I've been back up here now like five, maybe five years now. I came back, yeah, I left in oh nine.
What'd you think, you 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 rapped in Mobile then, right, cuz you been?
No.
No, not at all, okay, I was gonna ask you what the difference in the music scene was, but I guess.
You know what's crazy? Now, like before I left Mobile, like when I went back when I had my son, it wasn't like really that big with like local artists and stuff like that, not how it was here. Cuz before I left, we had a little pone and all that stuff before I left, so it was like Huntsville was already a music scene before I left. So when I got to Mobile, it wasn't really like that, the only person I knew about in Mobile at the time was uh, Bianca Clark and uh, who else was it, before I came up here, Young Blue had just blew up. It wasn't really like a lot of, I mean, you had C now, he he's a legend in the city, you had him. But he was like the only person that I knew for real before I left Mobile as a kid that was really doing music in Mobile. So it wasn't as big of a music scene than it is now, now, they stepping, like it is so many artists in Mobile that's just hardest, like people don't even know half of them, that ain't even made it on the screen yet, like it's so much talent down there now. And I'm like, damn, y'all wanna start this when I leave? But uh, yeah, they stepping down there, man, them boys coming, them girls, them females pressure too though, for real.
What uh, how did you get into it?
Into music?
When you got here, what was it like when you got here, you got here and what, you was in what grade?
I was in the fifth grade.
Okay, so, you was about to be done with elementary school, you was about to start?
Mm-hmm, I was, yeah, going to the next level, but I wasn't even friendly or like really had friends when I first moved up here, like nah, I didn't even it didn't matter where, if I was here in Mobile, I was never the first one to go outside, wherever we moved to, I was never the first one to go outside.
Stay in the house goddamn.
Hell, yeah.
I don't know them motherfuckers.
My brother done be the first one out the door. When I first moved up here, I was like, damn, I gotta prove myself already, he get up here, we get up here, he done got the fight, I was like, I don't go outside for them type of reasons, right there. He come in, he done got the fight, and I'm like, oh man, now I gotta come outside, then I ended up being my best friend and shit like that, but, yep, I I got up here in the fifth grade.
Okay, so you got up here in fifth grade, and how many years were you here before you started realizing? Cuz I'm assuming you listened to music, being from Mobile, music already had to be something that was around you in your life. So what what moment, what year was that when all of a sudden you was like, you know what, I'ma do this shit?
Two thousand and nineteen? Twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, nineteen, that's when I got back up here, I wanna say the next year is when I just it's crazy cuz when I started, I literally wrote a song, I was just like, fuck it, I'm about to sit in the bed and write a write a song, like, I know I can do this, let me see, let me see if I can put this pain on this paper right here. And I just wrote a song, for real, and I'm just like, at that time, didn't really take it serious, I did music as a kid, I was in this little group. I was just telling my homegirl that today, like, we used to be getting ready for the Black Arts Festival and making up rhymes and shit, we finna go tell the Black Arts Festival down. Like, we was on that type of time, but I didn't take it serious then, it was just something to play with.
Something to do.
Yeah, it was just something to do, I actually made my first song when I turned thirteen, fourteen, I made my first song.
I was gonna say, cuz you couldn't have just one day, just a few years ago, been like, you know what, I think I could write a song, so okay, so when you're thirteen?
Cuz I had, a reason why I said it like that because I had thought, it had been a minute, I wasn't doing nothing music wise. I was only like, and then even then, when I made that first song, that was on some just play play shit, we was just playing, but we was calling ourselves a group and everything, like I stayed in Garden Cove, shout out to them Southside Boys, man, I stayed in uh, in Garden Cove on Clopton, so we called ourselves, they called themselves the GCP Boys. The reason why we put the P at the end of the name, cuz man, they used to go down in Garden Cove, the police told us, man, we get called out here more than we get called the bullet tears.
No.
So, they was calling it the project, so we start calling it the project.
I mean, it fit.
Yeah. Yeah, so I, we have, I made my first song up in there though, and then uh, they, my daddy didn't know I was doing music, and they fucked around and played the song for him, he pulled up out there, everybody knew who my daddy was. Like, all my friends was in love with my daddy, like.
He didn't want you to do music?
He he knew I sung, he knew I I could sing, he knew that, cuz I was always in choir in school or in church or something like that. But he didn't know that I could rap, I didn't know I could rap until I made that song.
Who told you to do it?
Me.
So you was sit, were you sitting around other folks that was like rapping and stuff?
I could do this shit.
I can do this shit. My first freestyle was crazy.
You you went there and did it, and your first time, the reaction was like, ah shit.
They was like, ah shit, they was, they used to call me Gangsta Boo, R I P Gangsta Boo.
R I P Gangsta Boo.
They used to call me, they used to say, tell us, cuz my nickname is Boo Nanny.
Boo Nanny?
Yeah. That's my nickname, so they took that, it was like, man, she sound like Gangsta Boo in this bitch. But yeah, they played the song for my daddy, you know, at that time, I ain't even know what rapping was, I ain't know you supposed to really rhyme with shit shit, I was on Charlie Boy and all that real hard back then. On all that chop and screw music.
What you mean, I just said it was bad.
He be hating on Charlie Boy, nevermind, it ain't about Charlie Boy.
It ain't, yeah, it ain't by him, but he's hard. But the old Charlie Boy hard, but um, I went, you, do you know um, D S R?
I've heard of him, but I ain't listened to him.
I fuck with them.
You know, uh, what was the others, the Tom Tom and Fat Beez?
Tom Tom and Fat, yeah, Fat Pastor.
That's how I came on my freestyle, on some shit like them. That's how I came in on that beat, but.
I be coming down.
Yeah, some shit like that, I I still remember my freestyle, yeah, I swear I do, that shit, I say it every day, cuz I be like, damn, I didn't came long ways.
That's what you saying?
Nah, which I wanna hear my first freestyle. Y'all don't laugh at my freestyle. This was my first freestyle, y'all, it went like this. Man, man, what the deal, do what you feel, hit a nigga up and I give him the chills, chill, take a pill, relax your skills. I don't give a fuck, and I'm watching Dr. Phil.
They not giving a fuck.
That was my first, it it was me and like two other people on the song, so we always going back and forth on the song or whatever, so yeah, I was like, okay, they played the song for my daddy. I went in the house, I was like, oh, finna get a head, listen to this word, about to put my ass in front of everybody, they played it, I came back outside, he act like he was mad, but they told me when he left, they was like, don't tell her, but I like it.
That had to feel great too.
It did, I got my ass on still though.
Out here rapping and shit?
That be that bullshit though, I done had some of them moments. I kinda like that shit, but I still gotta act like I didn't like what you just did.
Just did, right, gotta put that diss one down.
Glad you did that, okay, I get it, but, yeah, I know that had to be fucked up.
I officially started like really taking it serious in two twenty nineteen when I wrote Story. That's when I, and I still weren't really taking it serious, it was just like when I did the song, I was supposed to be in a group, but it didn't go like that, how it's supposed to go, but you know, God do things for a reason.
Them groups don't be working that.
No, they don't, I'm glad it happened before, and you know, but anyways, my brother called me, and was like, I I let him listen to it, we in the car. And I then put the beat on and I was rapping it to him, I got my shit on a pa, on a piece of paper. And um, he was like, hell, yeah, we finna go to the studio, we went to Boss Man's studio, I recorded the song and the rest is history. It went from there.
Which one, which uh, the one is that's not down now, like which which studio?
Uh, Boss Man? You know who Boss Man is? Boss Man High Frequency? Yeah, it was, I recorded it at his um, studio, we went to his his crib.
Okay, okay.
I ain't know who a Boss Man was until after that, but man, when that man mixed that song, I was like, oh, he fucking fire. I will never forget when I went in there and I did, I start uh, speeding my shit, he was like, damn, J C, she coming like this? One take like this?
That you don't un-
I still can't do that shit.
Do you do you do you do any engineering? Or like?
So I just got me a studio, shout out to uh, Reggie, goddamn uh, nut, I think his his name Nut Baby. Nut, nut, so I don't wanna call him Nut, cuz I think he's Nut Baby. But yeah, but he a rapper though, he was doing a little contest where he was giving away a um, studio setup. And you had to come into your name under the posts and get people to go like your your name, that's on the posts. Spam the fuck out that bitch, I swear to God, man, it was one dude on there, I thought I wasn't gonna win it, but I was like, I went to the door and I had just thought about it, I was like, man, God, if it's meant for me, that's gonna be my shit, that's my studio.
Well, there it is.
And I got my shit.
So you started doing the chat, or you get it?
I actually recorded a song on there, I got a song that I recorded on there, I'm still learning it, but that bitch sound pretty decent.
I'm asking, uh, you you recording people, right? Yeah, I'm I'm asking cuz it's with what you were saying about Boss Man and and how your session went, it's, man, for an engineer to get somebody that can just go one take, oh my God.
Yeah.
Thank God, Jesus.
Yeah, cuz I'm not one of them.
Nah, I ain't gonna say like I ain't never been like got in the studio and got it.
You be like, woo. It's like, yo, that's the most, it's an unexpected feeling that feels so great.
When you see me come and get your punchy hands ready, goddamn.
Yeah, nah, I I do that too.
He said, get that shit ready.
When I record somebody and they don't got a Yeah, that shit's fun, that's a fun moment.
But see, cuz I write though, so if I'm already writing a song before I even get there, that's, I guess you would call it a one take, cuz I already know the song.
Yeah, I write this shit too.
Still, I be having songs I know that I'm done, and still be like, I don't know why I keep fucking that part up, but I fucked it up though.
Now, what I what I ended up at um, Platt Studios, he recorded damn near all of my songs. Like, the ones that I got after Story, he recorded all of them, like, dude's sound is crazy, for real.
Yeah, he said he, he said he, I mean, he said they even had a whole squad here with him, and they was, they had big plans, so.
Yeah.
That don't surprise me at all, so, I I I'm wondering how you decided on your name?
Nettie B.
So, my brother be saying, he was the one that gave me the name, but for real, for real.
So you don't agree, obviously.
Like, they both came up with the name at the same time, but I was going to thirty two O eight, shout out to A J, and I had performed Story. After I did it the first, when I went in there the first time after I recorded it, video went viral the same day, this is my first performance. I didn't even have a artist's name when I did that song.
I'm just me goddamn.
They see, I'm just, I'm just me, so, the next time I came, they was like, what's your name, what's your artist's name? And A J yelled out and said, Nettie B, and my brother was like, hell, yeah, Nettie B. Cuz it's like, my nick, my middle name is Anto Nick, they called me Boo Nanny, I already got the big B in the Boo Nanny. So, it's like, they they chopped up the Nettie with the Anto Nick, and that's like, with the Nettie, Anto Nick and the Nanny, and that's how you got Nettie B. So, yeah, it was unique, it's unique.
Knowing you was Nettie B.
Yeah, not even knowing it, on purpose, on accident.
Yeah, that's a wild origin story for a name, man, that's fire, like, most people, it's either something they've been called all their life, or they came up with it for some reason.
This a sound fire?
Man, when I hear people call me by my nickname now, cuz I'm so used to them calling me Nettie now. And I be like, man, I got to know you, cuz you call me my nickname, like, you gotta know who I am.
Man, okay, so when I see you, why, Boo Nanny? I ain't like, y'all hear me Boo Nanny?
They used to remix the name and everything, they used to call me Nanny Boo, Nanny Boo Boo, all that, I, my auntie used to piss me off, she used to call me Pooh Nanny.
It's fucked up TT.
I, man, you know how to say my damn name, was you saying it like that?
Your Boo Nanny come here, you know who I'm talking to.
Right.
So tell me, Nettie, who was who's some of your childhood heroes? Everybody had heroes growing up, didn't they? No.
I don't think I really had childhood heroes.
None of them motherfuckers, I just put the blunt out.
I don't know, I mean, when I was young, I looked up to my daddy a lot, I would say that. I did look up to him a lot. And it was like, he used to always try to mold me to be a little boy. All the time, yeah, he used to dress me up in little boy clothes. Man, it man, I had a fur, a blue fur coat, my first one at, what, six?
I'll say you was smooth as hell.
Yeah, man, my daddy was the man.
You was in Mobile looking like little meat.
Yeah, yeah.
Shout out to Daddy for that.
I sure would've put my son in there with my daughter in the blue fur if I could've goddamn.
Oh, God, I was, ay, stepping in my blue fur. And he used to always love leather jackets, I had definitely had one of them, big trench coat leather jacket.
I still ain't never had that.
A leather jacket?
I be looking like, I'm around with a n***.
Man, that shit make you feel like you finna goddamn. Man, that shit make you feel like you, who, what you said?
I feel like I look like I wanna ride a motorcycle.
But mo- most Italians, that's what they wear, they have on big ass trench coats, leather coats.
It's only three things that leather jackets that you think, that you would think of, and all three of them is some shit nobody wanna fuck with.
Yo, God, that motherfuckers got on a leather coat.
And it's Black Panthers.
Y'all on with the shit, every last one of them, that he just named with the shit.
You right, so you got a leather jacket, you gotta go with the shit.
Do not fuck with me, don't fuck with me. Yeah, you might throw on one, thank you and a mattress too, goddamn.
I'm gonna get the n***, the one like goddamn Uncle Charles, the nigga that took Uncle Charles, that's right. Long black one goddamn.
Yeah, I ain't, I ain't really have I ain't really had to, I mean.
When you first started the group, wh- what was the type of music you were listening to then, you remember?
Charlie Boy.
Man, okay.
I was on Charlie Boy hard, I was on Jeezy hard, I was on Gucci Man hard.
Okay, you went back up, I I was thinking you was gonna keep going that way, so, between that, were you on Louisiana Artists too, or? I know, I know a couple people from Baymanette, and I know like the stuff they listen to, so I'm just wondering if that was kinda like in that same area.
Because I was up here, well, in Mobile, we was more um Yeah, Baymanette right there across the the um, bridge, but um, I got people over there too, I just ain't met them yet, but um, we was on more like Master P them and
Yeah, that's why I was on it.
No Limit Soldiers, and they ain't, it was n****s real, they walking around in snug with gold tanks on. My daddy had a uh, No Limit Tank, I swear to God, my daddy had a No Limit Tank, but, man, they used to walk around that bitch with they, with they army fatigue on. All the, yeah, they had them tanks walking around them.
Go get you one of them Charles.
You had your No Limits uh, uh, tank boy, they thought you was pressure back then.
I know P them, nigga, this one real.
Nigga, that's my cousin, we live right next door. Man, no cap, that's really how I got into music for real, like a music head, my man, Mystical, it's like my daddy's fucking Fiend and all, Mystical, Fiend, all them, like I grew up on all them boys.
My favorite artists.
I love Fiend, I got a picture with Fiend.
I didn't hate on Fiend.
Man, I love Fiend.
He played a song for Puffin to put it out one week, and I just made my judgment on the song.
Is it an old song?
Yeah.
It was an old song?
I fuck with No Limit Fiend.
Okay, so we grew up on that type of music.
Maybe, probably not.
I grew up on that type of music when I was down there, we was on that type of time, but then when I moved up here, it was a different type of sound. So that's how I ended up listening to Charlie Boy and all them all the time, and D S R, and Tom Tom and Fat Beez, man, Tom Tom and Fat Beez, yeah. Know all, I can recite the whole song, like I love them boys.
How you feel about Three Six?
Yeah, Three Six, yeah, definitely, man, listen, me and my best friend, I got a best friend, his name Regal, we, that's all we used to listen to. Three Six Mafia, Lil Wayne, that's all we listened to, riding in the car.
Wayne had shit, Wayne had shit for a long time, man.
I'm talking about that throwback Lil Wayne.
Yeah, you talking about like before his voice changed, but didn't really change?
Yeah, that Lil Wayne. When he was on that, I'm a muck muck, mac mac, a pimp, I was on that Lil Wayne, on him, I don't know where he on now.
Are you talking about the first quarter?
Yeah, I was on that.
Yeah, yeah, I fuck with the first quarter.
I thought you was talking about Goddamn.
Yeah, I thought you was gonna go back to like
Even before that, yeah, even before that.
Hot Boys.
Yeah, all it, when them dreads was this little.
So who, you have a favorite artist? You got a top whatever or anything, like, is it go-tos?
My top artist right now is Lil Baby.
Lil Baby.
Right, that that man is pressure, like, I, when I look at him, I manifest myself in him, when I look at him, cuz that's me.
Okay then.
His struggle is like mine, like his come up like mine, I used to think the same way he think, like, damn, y'all gonna be coming to these shows, ain't nobody here. Still pop your shit, it don't matter who here, type shit like that, like, I love that man grind, I love that man hustle, for real, but yeah, and I ain't gonna lie. Globe been popping her shit too, I been got them like, that was very inspiring, and she younger than me, like
That's a wild girl.
She came on the scene and busted bitch wide open.
We've said some things about Glorilla recently. Full disclosure, but as far as
But my favorite artists are all the old school um, artists, it's like
That's what I'm wondering.
The ones I just named, like, I still play all of them right now to this day.
Then you couldn't play nobody else for the rest of the year, who you listening to, three people?
From then or now?
Anytime.
Definitely Lil Lil Baby, uh, anything Kevin Gates.
Okay though, in the gur.
No.
And Future.
Interesting, that's a, that's a even but eclectic
I can get, that's that's balance.
I fuck with one of them.
That's balance though, you could just think about Lil Baby, he gonna goddamn make you feel like you finna get up and go get some fucking money. Then you got Kevin Gates, I might wanna slap a bitch today. I might goddamn, this nigga done made me mad, but I still love this nigga type shit. It's gonna cover all the nasty stuff, it's gonna cover all the, he just an overround cover right there, then you got Future, if I wanna be in my zone. If I wanna be in my zone and I'm chilling, I'm gonna, I rock, I can ride to Future, like song for song. I have, I do do that.
Okay, I can, I can see that, I can understand that, um.
He just a mellow, he like a mellow little vibe, he could be turnt, but he could be mellow too.
I felt like you were gonna name somebody that was a little more intense, you would have at least one more person that comes off a little more.
Oh, Mia X off top.
No, you didn't put her on the list, she's not there.
I mean, I mean, you said three? Oh, okay, but yeah, she, yeah, oh, the rest of the year.
Yeah, for the rest of the year, you know, you're listening to three people, period.
But see, only reason why I could pick them three, like I could listen to Mia X, but she don't got enough for me to listen to through them, through the year.
Yeah, she got like three albums, they hard as hell, but they ain't for three of them.
They, I can't just, but yeah, them three, it'd be them three.
If Mia X is an alternate?
Yeah.
Olympic team. He like, he like Gates a lot, he's a big Gates fan.
You you don't like Gates a lot.
I don't like him a lot, he's got a couple songs.
Who? You don't like Gates?
Eh, not as, not as much as most people, but um, I got weird tastes, so.
I feel you. But I like a lot of music though, I don't just listen to rap and R and B, I listen to a lot of shit.
My playlist is so wild that sometimes it annoys me. It's like it goes from, it peaks and valleys, it's kind of crazy, I be like, why, I like this song, I'm about to take you off, like, just cuz it shouldn't have went from what I just listened to to this, but but yeah, so, but Gates is all right, he makes some good songs, I'm just not a fan like some other people are, that's all.
I fuck with the old Gates more than I fuck with the new Gates.
That's what he said too, cuz the la, I tried to, the first Gate album I listened to was the last one that he put out, it's still the last one, right, the one his son named, or his daughter named?
The Isla album, Isla.
As, as Akaya, Eska.
I don't know who them people are, I don't know, I don't know none of them people.
This is kid name.
Yeah, he got jokes and shit, that's Akaya.
Oh, man, y'all wild.
So, you think, go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna ask you, so, here's a, here's a question we like to ask around here.
Oh, Lord.
Yeah, yeah.
Should I prepare myself?
Nah, you good. You walking, you fine, so we don't even have to do all the intro shit no more, so you got one wish, goddamn it, you can have anything you You walking, you fine. So we don't even have to do all the intro shit no more. So you got one wish, god damn it. You can have anything you want. But one person is gonna die. One person you have met is gonna die if you get this, whatever you want. If you don't get the wish, everybody you met is gonna die.
What?
So you gotta get the wish.
So if I don't make the wish, everybody still gonna die?
Yeah.
Oh, no, we changed it. Remember, we revised it last time.
The person closest to you. Okay.
Well, say that again?
So if you push this button.
Mm-hmm.
Somebody that you've met at some point in your life will, will die. You don't know who it is.
Yeah, random person.
If you, you have no idea who it is.
If I push a button?
If you push this button. But you'll get your wish for one thing. If you don't push the button, the person closest to you is gonna die.
So pretty much you gotta push the button.
You gonna push.
So what if I push the button and my wish is for the person that whoever the person is?
Work.
That's fucked up.
Yeah. It has to be something tangible. Something that you can account for.
Yeah, some, somebody can see, be like, hey, look at that.
No, I'm saying, what if I push the button, uh, so I can't bring the person back that's gonna die with my wish?
Resurrect, no. It has to be something.
Not make you.
Gotta be something real. You gotta figure out what it is that you would sacrifice that for.
What?
Yeah. This is, this is.
That's how it work. I mean, you might not know the person that died.
Yeah.
Just a random person.
It might be whoever cut you off seven years ago in traffic.
It could be a eighty-four year old person at the hospital right now.
Oh, man.
It could be a baby though.
It could be a baby, just got here.
I don't wanna answer that.
But you got some now.
Cuz it's, it's like, they're still fucked up either way. I'm fucked.
No, cuz you get something in money.
But that shit don't mean shit. That don't mean, cuz what the, cuz nine times out of ten, whatever I'm finna wish for is gonna be some shit that ain't gonna really last that damn long.
Well, then you should make a better wish.
Can't get no money cuz you only get one of them. So if you ask for money, you get one one hundred dollar bill.
Well.
That's all the money you could get. Cuz you can only get one of them. So this just gotta be not money.
It can't be money. It can't be money for everybody needing. I can't say that.
No, no. No, you can't be a philanthropist.
Damn, I can't say the people with the wish.
Fuck the people. You already finna kill one of them, so fuck the rest of them. What you want?
Oh, man. This, I can't answer this question. Cuz I'mma always think about my people.
But you gotta want, you gotta, something that'll benefit your people.
Something that you can get.
Obviously, this shit I'm trying to say that ain't gonna benefit my people.
You gonna say?
I, you said it can't be money?
Can't be the money. Can't be the money.
What were you gonna say? Just a bunch of money?
Just everybody goddamn just flood the city with some money.
They don't, no, they don't get the shit. You get the shit.
Oh, man. Me too though.
Not you too. You get it. Not you also. Not you and them.
Oh, my God, um.
You can't say we or us.
And it, it ain't, can I bring a life back for a life?
Nah, I know, you can swap a mouth. No, I know.
Reaper.
Yeah, it's, it's not magic like that. Nah, yeah, no. Nah, it's not. I ain't never heard that one before.
I can't answer that.
Don't worry.
I ain't never heard that one before.
Has an answer right away, nothing.
Cuz what the fuck?
What, what some, some, some people said they wanted? Somebody wanted a fully staff mansion with a bunch of land. Yeah, I mean.
Somebody just wanted a huge field, so.
Just a field to sit in.
Acres, acres of wildflowers.
I want that shit too, but.
Alright, so you push the button?
Man, okay. Get you some wildflowers. You gonna go proleague it.
I want a lot of shit, but I ain't trying to get nobody killed to get the shit.
I know, but somebody gonna die. Like this is how the game work.
This is some sacrificial, some fucking uh, Illuminati shit right here.
They answer the phone.
I don't know, y'all. I can't answer that one.
Alright, um, what's your favorite song you've done?
Ooh, No Flex. That I've done?
Yes.
No Flex.
Why?
It's my favorite song. It's just something about that song like, I would've said Story, but Story was like really my, I came through the door with this song right here.
Cause I listened in a weird order, so let me go look at which.
No Flex. Yeah, that's my favorite song. That song, it don't matter if I get tired of performing that bitch, these people still wanna hear.
They wanna hear this shit. I like the song, hell. I like it. I wanna hear it, hell.
I be like, man, y'all ain't tired of it. They be like, hell, no, you gotta do that bitch. You tripping. But that, I feel like that song is just a timeless song. Like that song gonna always go, it don't matter.
Songs are two years apart from each other.
Yeah.
Okay. And those are the two that you kinda feel probably represent you the best or that make you feel the best?
Story represents me the best.
And the people want No Flex?
Yeah, I mean, they want all of them.
Yeah.
And that ain't even no cocky shit. Like, they want all them hoes. If I can sit there and perform every last one of my songs, they gonna listen. But Story is what describes me the best. But they definitely always go for No Flex.
Of course. I mean, you in the club.
Yeah. Or minding my business. Yeah.
Leave her alone. Don't leave her alone. She needs. Everybody spam her, um, YouTube and play the song some more and ask for it some more.
Period.
Tell us about, um, what is it? S G K Productions?
If she wanna, if she wanna pop on?
You, you. I mean, y'all know y'all shit better than I do.
I thought you was affiliate.
I mean, I am. We just, okay, so boom. I been, let me tell y'all the backend story about me and them. I met y'all, how many years ago? About, four years ago. Um, how did I, from Story. They seen my um, videos from the open mic at thirty two O eight. And um, I think Stoney sent me a friend request. And uh, but I don't know if your name was Stoney on Facebook then. Yeah. And I don't know what it was like, first, I just be, I'd be running into them. I ran into, like right after I did that, I think I met them before I did music.
Yeah.
I was doing hair when I met them. In, in Walmart.
So the hair came before the music?
Yeah, the hair came before the music. And uh, we was in there talking about hair and all that shit or whatever. Then I ran into them again. After the, I ended up, I ran into Stoney and um, Hair Queen. Both of us going in there, get our shit to go do some hair cuz she split heads too. So we both in that bitch getting, I'm like, I know you. She was like, yeah. Then she came to me automatically with a opportunity, like off the rip. I'mma hit you up cuz I got a opportunity for you. I already bet. They was doing the entrepreneur showcase. And uh, there's like different vendors and stuff. They come like showcase their, their businesses and shit like that or whatever. And they was, y'all was doing management. And uh, yeah, so I was their artist.
Okay, then.
And uh, that's how I met them. And it, it's like, I met them that year and then I got pregnant within the same year. So I had slowed down doing music. So that's why I had only had Story for a long time. And um, I bumped into them again. Right after I had my kids, like they never even, it's like we didn't really lose touch, but it's just cuz I wasn't on the same page as them. Like they was really like doing a lot of big shit then. And it's like, I went, I'm pregnant, I can't do shit. So.
The one, the time was right.
Yeah, the time was right. And the time was right, right now. Cuz I've been stuck with their ass for about two weeks now. But I've been knowing them for a lifetime. They, them are babies, man. They sweet. And they fine, they smart as fuck and they pressure as fuck. They got the whole package. Everything you need, they got it one stop shop.
That's what's up.
I appreciate y'all.
Oh, yeah. Tell them where to find you again, hell.
You can find me on Instagram at underscore N E T T Y B underscore two five six. Uh, I do have a Facebook page, Nettie B, but I don't be on it as much. But uh, I promote a lot of my stuff on my regular page. That's Antoinette Carter for those of y'all who don't know. Um, you can find me on Google, I mean, not Google. You can find me on uh.
You can Google.
You could Google me. But um, you could find me on um, YouTube, Apple Music, anything, Spotify, anything like that. N E T T Y B. That's me.
Alrighty. Anything else you wanna say before we get out here?
Oh, man. Let me um, go and tell y'all, yes, every Thursday we at the dish with it for open mic.
Oh, yeah, I forgot all about the goddamn. You went from artist to goddamn host of the open mic at the dish here Thursday, god damn.
We at the dish every Thursday night, man. Y'all pop out. We got three um, first, second and third place winners. We giving our cash prizes. And it's only gonna get bigger from here, so I advise everybody to.
I need to come get me some cash.
Follow you to get information about the dish?
Yeah, they can follow me. They can follow my Instagram. I post on my Instagram all the time. They, I post on my page. They might post it on they Instagram, on they page or whatever, but.
What's they Instagram?
What's y'all, what's it, what is it?
Uh, Queen Simba with a K.
Queen Simba with a K.
And Stoney underscore Rosebud with two D, two D's. And if you get predictions, just go to Facebook. Just type in, if you get predictions, you can get all of them. And Queen Simba Studios also, they're the most definitely on Queen Simba Studios on Facebook.
Alright, we gonna um, make sure that we get y'all to send goddamn, I'll probably hit y'all up, one of y'all, so we can get y'all information.